Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Griffin City Commission Meeting, September 27. We're glad to have everybody here tonight. I'd like to have Commissioner McCord lead the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation by Commissioner Tinsley. Please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious heaven father, we're here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just, for the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team, for the government of the city and its people. We pray in your name.
Thank you. We got the agenda as presented. We'll motion to approve the agenda. Motion, Mr. Rock, second. Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal or raise your hand. Six zero. Under Citizens' Comments, first item tonight, at this time, the mayor opens a floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for public hearings or to a concern within jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters to manage city business and will refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, if you're here but make a comment before the board other than on a public hearing matter, if you could please come forward. Anybody on my left side? Is there anybody on my right side? Okay. Moving into public hearings, public hearings are conducted to allow public comments on specific advertised issues such as rezoning ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. We have nine of those this evening, so play the air with us as we go through each one of these. Item one is to receive comments regarding requests for a special use permit for places of assembly in Central Business District where property located at 210 East Solomon Street. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind calling up the second one, too, and then we can hear both of us together and then vote on separate.
Sounds good. And item two is to receive comments regarding marriage request to reduce the two acre minimum lot size and 200 feet of street frontage requirements for place of assembly for properly located at 210 East Solomon Street. And again, Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. So what I'm going to do this evening, a slight little deviation that we're going to do at the beginning of each one of these due to a change in the zoning procedures law that just recently took place this summer under the Golden Dome. I'm going to give you guys a qualifier at the beginning of each one of these, but other than that, everything else is staying the same, so I just kind of want to explain that, so it might be a slight little difference. So, subject to House Bill 1405, I'm entering into the record. Article four codified on Unicode, the application submitted to planning and development by the applicant and the planning and development staff report. So, the applicant on this is Journey Church of Griffin, and they're seeking approval of a special use permit for a place of assembly to have a church at 210 East Solomon Street. This is a 16-year-old church that recently moved from 315 West Solomon Street, which you guys were here to place an assembly on a little bit later this evening. This parcel is within the Central Business District of the city, and as you may remember, as we've had a few of these kind of recently in the past, places of assembly which are over 3,000 square feet in size are subject to Article 721F, 3B, which states, requires them to be placed on land not less than two acres in area and having a street frontage of none, not less than 200 feet. Staff is recommending conditional approval of the special use permit, and we are placing the condition on there that the applicant shall apply for a variance from the minimum two acre lot size and the 200 feet of street frontage as they do not currently meet those. At their meeting on September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Board voted three to zero to approve the special use permit with the staff conditions, and we're also recommending approval of the variance on both the lot size and the street frontage. And with that, I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from members of the board? This is a public hearing on items one and two. Is there anybody on my left like to come forward? Is there anybody? If you please take your name and address. Welcome.
My name's Michael Moody. I live at 1106 Maple Drive, and I have pastored ministry church for the past 16 years. 14 of those years we've been in downtown Griffin and 315 West Solomon Street. In the summer, we made the decision to relocate, and we wanted to stay in downtown due to the fact that we have a heart for our city. We love being in downtown and the ministry opportunities that provides us. This building at 210 East Solomon does come up a few feet short of the 200-foot road frontage needed. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's 183, if I remember correctly from last week's meeting, and we're right there at 200. We simply want to do this the right way moving forward. We made the assumption that our permit to meet, we travel with us from 315 West Solomon. We were mistaken about that. We have injured into, at least with the owner of the building who's here tonight, we're renting from him approximately two-thirds of that building for our ministry needs. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from board members? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it still public hearings or anybody else like to come forward? Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, would I possibly? This is actually a approval recommendation tied to the land use and the zoning only. They will still, even assuming approval of this, they'll still be subject to all building and fire code requirements prior to operating.
All right. Moving into item three, to receive comments regarding a request to resume properly located at 315 North Knight Street consisting of 0.31 plus or minus acres from medium density residential to planned commercial development. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address.
Again, subject to House Bill 1405, I'm entering into the record the following article four codified on Unicode, the application submitted to planning and development by the applicant and the planning and development staff report which as follows. The applicant Ricky Lewis is requesting a zoning change from medium density residential to planned commercial development. Since the current use is commercial and the zoning is medium density, the property is considered non-conforming and traditionally been used as auto repair business and then the zoning, sorry, the occupational tax certificate has lapsed. So, this is the need for the zoning at this point in time in order to be able to use the property commercially. It must be noted that the future land use map has the subject property planned as residential. However, staff is recommending a conditional approval of the request from medium density residential to planned commercial development with the condition that the future land use map be amended from residential to commercial. And at their meeting on September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Board also recommended by a vote of three zero to approve the rezoning with staff conditions.
And since that time, Commissioner Ward, I've been discussing with Mr. Jacobs in regards to rezoning it to neighborhood business district versus the planned commercial development so that it fits more in line with residential homes. So, that's something that I want to recommend that we do.
That is an option that you have before you. You can zone it to neighborhood business if you so choose, which would still be a commercial designation. It's just slightly less intensive of the commercial zoning designations that we have.
Any other questions or comments regarding that or anything else that's brought before the board? This again is a public hearing. At this time, the applicant or anybody like to come forward? Any comments or questions? Is there anybody in the audience like to come forward? Yes, sir. Please come forward. If you, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
A lot nervous, not a little nervous.
That's okay, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
My name is Ricky Lewis. I'm the owner of property at 215 North Knight Street. And the reason that we're requesting the change because as it currently is designated, it never was suitable for a home to be designated as residential. And what the plan is currently to work with disabled veterans because I'm a disabled veteran and I want to help other disabled veterans because there is a gap in service and we need a place to focus right now is to do training and transitional services. It's woefully needed, and I would love to help other veterans, disabled veterans that spoken to me as I've spoken to them, and they, they're very much in need of services. And we're asking for your wisdom and discretion and helping us make this dream come true.
So, the neighborhood, would you have a concern in terms of us rezoning it to neighborhood business district versus planned commercial development?
No, sir.
Okay.
I thought I was just going to come up and just.
Thank you, sir.
Like I said, major nervous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. God bless you.
Give us a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience like to come forward with questions or comments on this matter? Moving into item four, and just for disclosure, the owner of the property, I've had business relationship in regards to insurance business, so just for the attorney, through that, that's all I need to disclose. Item four is to receive comments regarding requests for a special use permit for a place of assembly in the Central Business District for a person properly located at 315 West Solomon Street. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address. And then we also did number five, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then item five is to receive comments regarding marriage request would be minimum two acres lot size and minimum 200 street frontage requirements for place of assembly for property located at 315 West Solomon Street. Go ahead, sir.
Again, subject to House Bill 1405, I'm entering into the record the following article four codified on Unicode, the application submitted to planning and development by the applicant and the planning and development staff report which as follows. The applicant Stacy Manta, if I'm getting that right, is seeking approval of a special use permit for a place of assembly at 315 West Solomon Street. This parcel is located within the Central Business District, and the purpose for the place of assembly is to host an event center which would handle weddings and other events at this location. Again, as the place of assembly is over 3,000 square feet in size, they are also subject to the requirement of the two acre area and the street frontage of not being less than 200 feet, which this currently does not comply with. The staff is recommending conditional approval of the special use request with the condition that the applicant shall apply for a variance for the minimum two acre lot size and the 200 feet of street frontage requirements of the place of assembly, which they have provided the variance request. At their meeting on September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Board also voted by three zero to approve the special use permit with staff conditions as well, and staff is also recommending approval of the variance request. I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from board members? Again, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to address this concern, applicant or anybody else, items four or five, please come forward. You can please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Stacy Methena, and my address is 100 Grisling Lane, Ravenhurst. Thank you for having us tonight. Thank you. I feel privileged. Just like to speak, I am the owner also of Passion Events and Design. I have been a business owner here in Griffin for three years. I would like to expand my business to 315 West Solomon. When it became available, I was very excited. Since I was, I can remember, I've always had a dream of having a wedding venue and being a resident of Griffin. I'd love to bring the service. My ultimate dream is, I think every bride deserves a wedding for dreams and matter for budget, and I want to bring a beautiful place right here in downtown so brides can come and have the wedding of their dream. With your approval, I would love to bring the service to here in Griffin.
Thank you. Any questions? Are there any other, anybody else in the audience like to come forward on this matter for items four and five? Moving into item six is to receive comments regarding a variance request to exceed the maximum 220 square feet foot building signage requirement for the sign, where it's properly located at 815 East Slayton Avenue. Go ahead, sir.
Again, subject to House Bill 1405, I'm entering the following into the record. Article four codified on Unicode, the application submitted to planning and development and the planning and development staff report. The applicant Kyle Burt is representing SA Recycling, and they are proposing to install a signage on the building, which is actually already there, at the size of 1,125 square feet. Building signs are not allowed to exceed the maximum allowed, which is 220 square feet or 15% of the building sign is located on, at the property, but 220 is the max that they're allowed. So, with that being said, staff is recommending denial of this request, and with that, we'd be more happy to answer any questions.
So, the sign is still, it's already there?
It's already there. And this has gone through a code process.
Are there any questions from board members? And this is a public hearing with the applicant or anybody in the audience like to make a presentation of this kind of questions, right? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Kyle Burt, the GM over at this location. When my boss came to check out the thing.
What's your address? Your address.
Oh, it's just a GM over right there, 105 East Slayton Avenue. Do you need my home address?
That's good.
When my regional general manager came out for the first time to check out a location, he went around the building, saw the exterior wall, saw it was gigantic, said, what an amazing opportunity. Let's get hired or pay him immediately. I just came out of active duty military. Thank you for servicing. I was also in the Navy. I had no idea about checking with the city on this, nor did he mention it. So, I found a painter, went forward, and then it just so happens when the enforcement code officer came, I was on PTO. So, we kept going because I had no idea about it. So, I think I'm just trying to, I'm hoping we can keep it. If we can, obviously, I understand. It faces railroad track, doesn't seem to be an eyesore of any sense. I'm hoping we can keep it. If not, we'll have to get it covered up, and that'll be a substantial hit to the, to this location, but obviously, it's not their issue. But anyway, yeah, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. Staff, anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody like to address this concern for item six on the signage? Moving into item seven, receive comments regarding a request to rezon property at 929 South Hills Street consisting of 0.7 plus or minus acres from institutional to planning commercial development. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address.
Subject to House Bill 1405, I'm entering the following into record. Article four codified on Unicode, the application submitted to planning and development by the applicant and the planning and development staff report. The applicant, K. Gary, is requesting a zoning change from institutional to planned commercial development. The former use was commercial and had been for many years. This was the former, I bet, near in Flint. And current zoning is institutional and a limited number of uses are permitted within the institutional district. Staff is recommending that this be approved to PCD. The property is future land use plan as commercial, so this would be consistent with the land use plan and comprehensive plan. And at their meeting on September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Board also voted three to zero to approve the results of the request. I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Given this a public hearing at this time, applicant or anybody like to make a comment on this matter? Moving into item eight, to receive comments regarding a request to rezon property located at 1437 DS Fuller Drive consisting of 22.462 plus or minus acres from low density residential B to high density residential B. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address.
Subject to House Bill 1405, I'm entering the following into record. Article four codified on Unicode, the application submitted to planning and development by the applicant and the planning and development staff report. So, the Appicant Gateway Development Corporation is requesting rezoning of the subject property from low density residential B to high density residential B. The property currently has double frontage both along West Popular Street and DS Fuller is approximately 22.62 acres. The applicant's original proposal was for 160-unit multifamily apartment community along with 120 units of senior housing for a total unit count of 280. However, the plan was downsized after submitting to 150 multifamily apartment complex due to limited sewer capacity that's within the area, and this is within the Stoll Creek basin. The applicant has provided examples of similar styles of apartment complexes that they're proposing from an architectural standpoint, and must be also noted that they're submitting this to DCA for 4% low income housing tax credit application, and that is due in October, October 14th to be exact. The future land use map does have this property planned as residential. Couple things of note, there was a capacity letter that was provided to the applicant back in September 2021, which allowed for 150 units in this area. However, in July, on July 12th of 2022, we enacted a moratorium for new sewer connections in the Stoll Creek service area. So, obviously, that's kind of compounded things a little bit. Staff is recommending tabling of this request until it's such time that a developer can provide a sewer flow analysis to the city of Griffin Water Waste Water Department verifying that the added demand can be handled by the existing system. This is something that was also required of the last 4% tax credit project out on Williams Road. At their meeting on September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Board voted three to zero to approve the rezoning. Anyone happy to answer any questions?
We've got it in the catch point, too. You have a great opportunity and great development, but because of the timeframe of the tax credits being October 14th is the deadline?
Yes.
It kind of puts it as a issue where we may put them out of project for the next year or so, depending on.
There is the option, after the 4% window, there is a 9% tax credit window. So, I wouldn't want to speak for the applicant on that, but that is something that we've had a conversation on, but I know that they are pressing pretty hard to meet this October 14th deadline.
Chad, did the previous project, did any of this contain the study feasibility for sewer or no?
The previous project? Yes, they did do a sewer feasibility or a flow study.
But since then, we've gotten moratoriums of the.
Correct.
How long would it take for people to get that piece of information?
Unfortunately, I don't know. Given the short window that's there, it's going to be hard, just to be honest, that's going to be a tight kind of timeline to achieve on that, and really, it just kind of depends on workload that these engineering groups, whoever does the study, how quick they can get to it and how quick they can kind of turn it out, so.
I know you said they got to 4% tax credit, but was it possible to them to get it denied?
Well, they haven't gotten the 4%, they're submitting. So, then these are going to be the, they will be scored by DCA, so they need, obviously, the zoning is instrumental in helping out their application with respect to the tax credit. So, and actually, we're fans of the tax credit applications, but this is a very tight one.
When we table it, it puts them out of the, possibly puts them out. Chad, is it possible that we could consider this subject to a flow analysis?
You couldn't. I mean, that is an option that, actually, they would be taking a risk on that, you know, that if the analysis doesn't come back favorably, you know, then I don't know what kind of way that puts us in terms of a, if a condition that I don't know.
Could they do their own set? I mean, I know it's, that's incentive, that's incentive, but it's.
Yes, it is.
Could they not do their own set, but they have to make this.
It's, they would need a time on the circuit.
Mr. Weller, any thoughts?
The mayor, if you had any thoughts?
We're really concerned about the fact that sewer is not available at this time. We would know more if we had the flow study, and I sort of feel like the applicant waited too late to come to us, and I think it was driven by the fact that they thought they could get the tax credits this year from DCA.
To be fair, the state was late in releasing information.
It was late, but that's not our fault.
All right. Any other questions on the board members? This is a public hearing with applicant, like to come forward?
My name is Troy, Troy Willis. I'm from Florence, Alabama, and I represent the Gateway Companies. I can touch on a few things about the project, but it seems like the highlight is the sewer. And we understand that. We have, I've had a conversation or two with Brandon at Waste Water, and we've, we've reached out to an engineering company to do a flow study and I&amp;I study to identify some areas that could possibly, you know, help with some of your infiltration to some of your system, and it's just not possible to get that flow study back before the 14th. Now, I do want to say one thing, that the state, the DCA, they were late putting out the final QAP, so, and in that, it directs the areas that the developers go look. But I originally talked to Brandon about this back in August, and I don't think he was even aware that I had the letter from last September, and I gave it to him. But I guess what I would like to say is that had I known back in August that we were going to have to do this analysis, I possibly would have had time to do it. But I didn't know anything about a flow study or an I&amp;I analysis until last week at the planning board meeting. It never had been conveyed to us that we were going to have to do that. So, I reached out to a local company here, and we're willing to do that. We just are trying to cross the two hurdles to get to application, and then I'm sure you guys are familiar with the process. It can be three or four months before we even know if we get funded. And during that period, we're willing to do the analysis. It's just that it's not feasible to have it back now, since I just found out about it last week, to have it back before the application period. So, I'm just asking that if we can, you know, get, and Brandon and I even talked tonight before the meeting, I mean, we're, we're willing to do this, the study, and he says he's willing to update the letter with some language in it that goes into our application that says it's subject to, in some capacity of a capacity, flow analysis. So, I guess, you know, for that, I just, any questions that you might have for me or comments, I'm willing to.
The place to do the analysis being conducted on 150 units, is that correct?
That's right.
So, where were we saying that there was less units?
With the moratorium in place, it really doesn't matter how many units, none if it's new or undeveloped land. So, and again, that's also dependent upon what it is, but definitely 150 units. So, and again, that's also dependent upon what it is, but definitely 150 units. You're not having engineers say that we have the flow that can handle it. Right now, we just don't know that. We don't think we do, which is why we entered the moratorium. But if somebody could prove otherwise or show a way to fix it, we did that with the capacity recovery through the last apartment complex. But that was because of the flow study results that we were able to provide that service.
And with our letter that we got last year, we did agree to a impact fee or a capital recovery fee or whatever you want to call it, and it was in excess of $400,000 that we agreed to pay, and so.
Any other questions?
So where do you guys stand if we table this?
Well, okay, so I think Chad told me if we table it, it goes to the 11th. Is that your next meeting? Am I correct in that?
That would be the next available meeting, assuming that you guys could get the study.
I mean, he said he couldn't have the study before the 14th, so you can't have it before the 11th, so.
Then you're going to have all your documents, all your ducks in a row by the 14th.
For the 14th. At like five o'clock or something, so. This particular engineer, he's, he's, he's done some work in the basin before, and I was hoping that, you know, collectively, he and Brandon could get together, identify some I N I areas that from the past study that could, you know, help us push this thing along. Still not trying to get out of doing our own studies, but we're more than, well, more than willing to do that. It's just from a time standpoint, and without rezoning, then, and without, you know, sewer ladder, then there is no application.
I think you gave us some thought, we're actually, at this point, but can you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I just.
Any other questions from board members at this time?
No, no, we're already investor in the area. We own the tranquil, we at Griffin on north of town. Thank you.
Give us a public hearing. Is there anybody else to let a comment on item eight?
Mayor, Mr. Whelan and I were just discussing, I think one potential option is to zone it contingent upon a flow study result coming back with sufficient flow or the ability to create sufficient flow with the capital cost recovery fee from the developer. But we would want a hard deadline on that, not just an open ended. So if we either did not have that letter or the results were negative by the end of the year, then it would revert back to its current zoning, and that could be a possibility.
Would that satisfy your needs?
We can do that, as I mentioned to Chad and Brandon both, the letter to DCA has to be like really clean, like this property is zoned for multifamily development. We understand that if the flow analysis comes back bad by December, it'll revert back. But for application purposes, the sewer ladder, all letters, water, sewer, electric, all those letters have to be just as clean as possible, but, because you can imagine they.
If we did it this way, would you consent that if the flow study comes back and says it's not sufficient flow or capacity for 150 units, but there is for 100, that we bring?
Yes, anything between, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I meant to say a while ago when the gentleman asked, anything between 100 and 150, our model pencil out in a 4% deal, 4% bond deal. If it gets below 100, it will not, so thank you for mentioning that, but yes.
I think my concern is I don't have a problem saying that it is zoned H G R once we are done tonight. The problem is we cannot guarantee sewer, and the letter will have to reflect such. I can't write a letter that says it's guaranteed when it's not, because we don't have sewer flow analysis.
I would be uncomfortable to say that myself.
Yeah, so the zoning letter would be clear, but the sewer letter is going to be contingent upon a sewer flow analysis. I can't, we can't guarantee it today, and Mr. Lewis, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, and that's been part of the discussion. As you mentioned, you know, when, when I learned about the letter that was provided back in September, that's began looking into the issue, and due to circumstances changing with the moratorium in place, now I don't see any fair way forward without requiring this, so it's, you know, it's what we need to do. And also, just because of the fact that the moratorium is a place for a reason, you know, this is one of the mechanisms for us to address capacity to allow for one-off projects to be served in that sewer basin. But in no means, and I want everyone to understand that, a sewer flow study, unless we find a whole creek running into the sewer system, not going to be the case. You know, it's not going to alleviate capacity based on why, it's going to alleviate, or it's going to compensate for their demand that's being added to the system if it pans out.
And I'm agreeable to what you just said, as far as the zoning letter and then the sewer letter having that caveat in it. If and when the study is completed and it proves favorable, can we come back and get a clean sewer letter?
Without a doubt.
We can, we can submit that with a fee, a hefty fee, but we can submit it after the fact, okay? We have to have one at application, but we could send that, a clean one after the fact, because they take four or five months to go through these applications. They may not have ever even looked at offers by the time this is over and we send a clean one. So I'm good with that.
If we can do that, then we have no problem putting that in.
Well, that's fine.
We want to do whatever we can to figure out how to make it work.
Understand, and I want to say.
And that's why, to kind of make sure we slow down this, to make sure we don't.
I appreciate that, and Chad, they've been great to work with, okay? So they, they're trying to figure out a way to do it, not not to do it.
Yes, I understand, and that's why we're trying to have the trial that we can use to protect you and the city at the same time.
And we're agreeable to that, if that satisfies the body.
If our legal counsel is good to go, then we vote favorably that we can go forward.
Okay, thank you so much.
In this a public hearing, is there anybody else in the audience like to come before the board on this matter? Moving into item nine, received time regarding a request to rezone property located at 1556 Old Atlanta Road, consisting of 0.28 acres for planned industrial development, planned commercial development, and also for exposure, I represent insurance needs for the insured as per the statement of the attorney's recommendation. So with that being said, move forward.
Here we are with the final one. Subject Houseville 1405, amended into the record article four codified on municode. The application submitted to planning and development and planning and development staff report. The applicant Randy Pollard, which is also part of One International, has requested a zoning change of 0.28 acres located at 1556 Old Atlanta Road from planned industrial development to planned commercial development for the purposes of operating a small restaurant and grocery. Eating establishments are only allowed in current zoning, which is P I D with approval of a special use permit. However, the conditional comprehensive plan in the land use map has this area planned commercial, so it made more sense to go ahead and rezone instead of sending it through a special use process. Historically, this property was used as a restaurant called Fresh Place. So staff is recommending approval of the request, and at their meeting on September 19th, the planning zoning board voted three to zero to approve the rezoning as well. That would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from commissioners? This is a public hearing on item nine. Anybody like to come before the board, comments, questions? All right. Moving into the consent agenda, we've got items 10 through 16. Do we have a motion to take the consent agenda as a whole? Ms. Murray with motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor of the consent agenda items 10 through 16, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. And then Mr. Jacobs on item 17, 18, do we take them in order of 17 and 18, or do we have to take 18 first and 17? In terms of the.
You can take them in order, just obviously vote on them separate.
Okay, sounds good. Item 17 is considered an irregular agenda. Item 17, consider request for a special use permit for replacement assembly in the central business district, C B D, for property located at 210 East Solomon Street, and I believe there is condition applicant shall apply for variance from this minimum one acre lot size to 200 feet, which will take place next. Do we have a motion to approve? Ms. Murray with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. On item 18, consider variance request reduced to two acre minimum lot size and 200 foot street frontage requirements for replacement assembly for property located at 210 East Solomon Street. Mr. McCord with a motion, second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 19, consider request to rezone property located at 215 North Knight Street, consisting of 0.31 plus or minus acres from medium density residential to planned commercial development. And I'd like to make a motion to approve that in neighborhood business district. I got a motion, you have a second? Ms. Murray with a second? Any questions or comments?
Ms. Murray, that would be with the condition to amend the land use as well, right?
Yes, sir, we need to, future land use map shall be amended from residential to commercial in the future land use. So that's with my motion, and you're going to second on that?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is second with the condition, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 16 is to consider request for a special use permit for place assembly in central business district. I'm sorry.
Twenty.
Oh, I'm twenty, I'm sorry, I'm twenty, consider request for a special use permit for place assembly in central business district for property located at 315 West Solomon Street, with the condition of applicant shall apply for variance from the minimum two acre lot size and the 200 feet of street requirements of places and assembly. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Oh, you did it, I'm sorry, Mr. Ward, you got to be louder and prouder. Ms. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 21 is consider a variance request from the, from the minimum two acres lot size and minimum 200 feet street frontage requirements for places of assembly for property located at 315 West Solomon Street. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 22. Is consider a variance request to exceed the maximum 220 square foot building signage requirement in the signed ordinance for property located at 815 East Solomon Street. Pleasure on the board.
East Slaton. East Slaton.
I'm sorry, 815 East Slaton, thank you. No motion tonight from Ms. Ward? So what was your? Staff made a recognition. And Ms. Ward? Ms. Murray's second for denial. All in favor of the denial of the request, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 23, consider a request to rezone property located at 929 South Hill Street, consisting of 0.70 plus or minus acres from institutional to planned commercial development. With a motion approved. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mr. Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 24 is consider request to rezone property located at 1447 D F Fuller Drive, consisting of 2.22.62 plus or minus acres from low density residential B to high density residential B. And no. So what, what's the verbiage that we need to have if we're going to approve this, Mr. Whelan? Recommend approval.
Well, it's what we just ended up.
Yeah.
With the condition of a sewer flow analysis being conducted and the results becoming favorable results no later than December 31st of this year.
And the rezoning, that once you do the rezoning, it would stay, whether it comes back favorable?
No, if it doesn't come back favorable, it's going to go back to L D R P.
We're going to revert it back to the current zoning if you don't get a favorable flow study. Now, frankly, we'd probably just hold another hearing at that time.
Right.
Take it back, I just.
Okay. Good, we have a motion to exclude this. What they say, condition of slow analysis through December 31st of 2022. So Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mrs. Murray. Any other questions? Does the applicant have any concerns?
No, I think it's just the rezoning letter, if they claim that a sewer, like sewer had that language. Yes. Yes, that's, that's good. I don't think both of them language.
Okay. So we have a motion to second.
It's clean to.
All right, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 25 is consider request to rezone property located at 1556 Old Atlanta Road, consisting of 0.2 plus or minus acres from planned industrial development to planned commercial development. Mr. McCord with a motion, second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 26, we consider a resolution for section 219 of the code ordinance to ratify a purchase order with Crawford Grading and Pipeline Inc., lowest responsive bidder for paving in the Hilladel subdivision, including full debt reclamation, asphalt striping in the amount of $227,672.30. Ms. Murray with motion, second by Mr. Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 27 is consider a construction contract with Brentford Construction Company, low bidder in the amount of $1,225,000 for the construction of the City River and Budge Apartments, building addition located at 1010 North Hill Street, considering the drawdown of the amount not to exceed $1,225,000 from B A Municipal Competitive Trust, short-term flexible operating account, and amend the budget accordingly. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mr. McCord. All in favor, please signal your hand. Six, zero. And item 28 is to consider contract for water and sewer construction services for phase one of the community development block ran D F Fuller revitalization area from R D J E Inc., lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $1,337,887 for the Department of Watership Management and amend the budget accordingly. Motion by Ms. Ward, second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, please stick your hand. Six, zero. Got through that, we hope, let's get you up to. And that is it, so city manager, board.
I'm impressed, well, it's quite efficient, the non-public hearings. I thought, I told the babysitter eight o'clock. Just a few things, most of what you're very good today. We have found out, I think Friday of last week, that we have been awarded another C D B G grant, and this time, it's the first time the state is giving out a million dollars. So instead of a $750,000 check, we will be getting a million dollar check. So good, good work to the consultants and our consultants on getting us that grant. And also, Mr. Smith, if you remember, that man, was named today the Exchange Club Man of the Year. So Mayor Holberg and I had the pleasure of attending that ceremony at Southern Crescent. I just wanted to put on the record that it was, I think, well deserved, and of course, he was a humble recipient, but it was, it was nice to see and then hear from him. Also, we have the opportunity to potentially lease or sublease the parking lot that everybody has always wanted across from now Smoked Barbecue. Encore Patel reached out to me, who is the owner of Smoked, and asked if we were interested in leasing that. I don't think he needs it currently, and it seems to be full of people at the courthouse. He did also send that same email to Dr. Love Better, because in my opinion, that needs to be a joint effort, potentially from the D D A, the city, and the county. So if you're interested in proceeding or looking at that option, the parking lot itself is owned by Otis Blake, so it would have to either be a sublease from him or a new lease agreement with the Blake family partnership, so we can look into that if you have any interest in it, I think I have not, okay? We can do that. And a reminder that Mayor Holberg, Commissioner McCord, Commissioner Flowers, and Commissioner Ward have all signed up to attend the District Four Fall Listening Session, which is at the R F Strickland Building in Concord on Thursday from 11:30 to 1:00. I think we'll have some interesting presentations there, so I look forward to that. And a couple things, just to give you a heads up on, we will have some emergency purchases at the next meeting. Again, we are struggling to find supplies, so when we do, we are signing P O's to get them, two of which are Tahoe's for the fire department. They've been on hold for a year and a half, I think, looking for a vehicle, and three of them are for water. So you'll see some emergency purchases that Mayor has approved pursuant to our code for emergency procurement, but you will actually see those items at your next meeting. Also, we need help, we have at least. help. We have at least 54 vacancies as of two days ago, and I learned that yesterday we had four more resignations. So in a workforce of 440-ish, we're well over 10% vacant. So I wanted to put that on the record. For those of you know anybody looking for a job, please send them our way, because we have a lot of different job levels and responsibilities and duties that we can certainly put some people to work. And then last but not least, we will spend a good deal of time tomorrow in staff meeting, talking about hurricane prep. We think the trajectory is a bit different from Hurricane Irma, so we might not have as quite as severe side effects as we did in 2017, but we will make sure we are ready, and we'll meet again on Thursday, in case anything changes between Wednesday and Thursday. So if you have any questions or concerns about that, please reach out to us and let us know. And that concludes my report.
I'd like to give you my time, and I give it back to you. In event of a storm, what should the people do? We call in. That's, that's why I'm giving you the time.
Thank you, thank you. We now have an outage management system, and I actually went down to the systems operations facility at our last storm, when we lost power for a couple of days, and watched how that works. And it works exceptionally. The best thing that a citizen can do is not call us. We see it on the map immediately, and we have dispatched crews out there. However, when we have, and we'll have more than our regular one, because we're preparing for a storm, so we'll have overtime already called into systems operations, I'm sure. And so when they are dialing, answering the phone for citizens, telling us that the power is out, which we already know, they cannot communicate with the crews. And so we're having to wait to talk with a crew who's going, I'm ready, I'm ready to flip the switch, but we can't, because we're talking to the customer instead. So it would actually be a quicker process if they let us talk with the crews. I think I will give us a round of applause for our last storm response. We were very active on social media, providing updates that way. That really does seem to be the easiest...
City of Griffin page.
City of Griffin government page.
Facebook page or a government page.
Yes. And also, if you are signed up for text, all you have to do is call customer service, and make sure that they have your correct phone number on your account, and they will send you a text. If you are in that system, that particular area of the system, to let you know, this is the problem, this is how long we expect you to be out, and they'll let you know when the power's back on, in case you guided in 2017 with a four week old house. And when they hadn't had it then, texted me, I could have come back to my house. It's very nice. Thank you for letting me say that.
Mr. Waylon?
Just very briefly, Mr. Flynn had asked me today if it's $1,337,000 CDBG contract, but be of any assistance to his client. Unfortunately, that's to put in new service lines in the area, not to put in the transmission lines, sewer, you need. So just point that out. Congratulations to Kenny Smith.
And we also want to thank, on the bonds, we saved 2.7 million dollars.
We did our pre-closing today. We saved about 2.7 million by not having to pay off 2012 bonds to material.
Just under 2% was the term, so it got hurt.
We hit it just at the right time.
Is it already committed?
Of the savings? Of course, it's already spent with everything else that Brandon keeps wanting to spend money on, but...
Send all leftover money to the sewer.
No, well... Thanks. Mr. Brock?
Wow. Thank you, Drew. How you work? Good job. Saving money is a big thing today. As we go down the road, I'm sure we need to save a whole armload, so we've got to be ahead of what's fixing to happen here. Griffin, Des Moines County, work hard and make it work possible. But that being said, I had my meal of corn, dog. My wife did, she was very happy with my meal choice tonight. And so if you haven't done it, you've got a few more days to do it. And they were very gracious. I called about three, they had me at 3:15. And they figured me out, and I still be calling back today tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, everybody, for being here, Chad. This was your meeting tonight. So thank you for all the hard work. I always learn a lot from you, and I appreciate you explaining all those house wheels and everything, and Unicode, and lots of terminology. And thank you for all the applicants. Thank you for being patient with us, and for investing in our community. And I can't say thank you enough for everyone who tries to bring business and homes, and things that we very need. So thank you for staying with us, and appreciate your patience.
Commissioner Ward. No, Mr. Tensley?
Just reiterate what you said about, we needed some employees, so knowing everybody, people willing to work, send them to the city of Griffin, ready to put in work.
And today, it was, it was exciting. I had the opportunity to introduce Mr. Smith today, and he honored, or he said that the honor that he would receive, he bestowed on Dr. Keller. So today, he gave Dr. Keller credit for many great meetings today. So it was very humbling, and he was very appreciative. Also, coming up, Downtown Council, the city are doing Feast on East Solomon Street. This is our annual fundraiser event. It's on Sunday, October 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. Cost is $25 per ticket, or $200 per table to pay. So that should be hitting the event bright the next couple of days. So I'd love to have you join us for that great annual fundraiser event of the Downtown Council. And of course, the Spalding County Fair is doing this Saturday. So thank you for all the local enforcement, everybody that's participating. Griffin Fire Rescue is out there every night. Also, not only talking to children about fire safety, but also the first aid station. I've seen them help a kid with a bloody nose. I've seen them help a young girl that had a skinned knee. So they're out there being ambassadors of our city every evening. So I'm very proud of them. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Thanks.
Mr. Tensley with motion, second by Ms. Murray.
All in favor, please leave.